Like to call this regular town board meeting for Tuesday, December 17th to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Here.
Trustee Zizaro.
Here.
Trustee Hart. Trustee Katzos.
Here.
Trustee Moreland.
Here.
Trustee McLaurin.
Here.
And Mayor Ah.
Here. I'll rise for the pledge.
Pledge and to comply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does the board have any conflicts of interest?
No.
Nope.
No.
I do. I have to leave during 5A. Trustee Moreland, would you like to run the meeting?
At that point, yes.
At that point. I'll need a motion in a second on that.
I motion that trustee Moreland step in for Mayor Ah on Agenda Item 5A, Resolution 643, Pine River Commons deed restriction.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next up is the general public input, limited to 10 minutes, three minutes per speaker. Lucy, are you...
Is she first, is she on the agenda?
She's on the agenda.
Good evening, my name's Lucy Stewart, and I'm sure everybody knows about the incident that happened with trustee Hart's. I, that night, after think much thought about it, I emailed Katie and asked for the board to consider what she's doing to the people. I'm not the only one that's attacked, I'm the only one that's come forward at this point as far as I know, but I think the board needs to do, this is a liability. If she's going to my property and verbally attacked me and hit my vehicle and parked in my driveway, this is not what I've signed my name in here and what I put my address for. She needs to be relieved of her duties, and it needs to be done, and it needs to be done now. Don't keep burying this, she's doing too many things out there that doesn't look right on the rest of the board, and it's not good for our community to, for her to be doing what she's doing. And she has been cited.
Thank you, Lucy.
Item number two is a moratorium on development requests.
Wait, 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 you have people to talk to.
That would be at the next general public input.
Ah, okay.
If you look on the agenda.
Hi, everyone, my name is Cassie.
Hang on, she's up next.
Oh.
And then you can get up.
Julie Blanchard, 627 Louisiana Drive. So I'm here to address the request for moratorium. The word moratorium can issue strong negative opinions when associated with the town, so I ask you to keep an open mind to understand why I'm asking for this request. A temporary pause hold on accepting new development applications may keep the town from making costly mistakes that its citizens would have to pay for later, a short-term sacrifice for a long-term gain. At the time I wrote this request, the town had no community director or planner, and the town manager's last day is December 27th. That will leave the town with no continuity of oversight for the development process. Dan with SEH is providing a service consulting for our town. He can review applications to match to our land use codes but cannot comment to the planning board, board of trustees, or citizens on any projects that have been engineered by SEH. Right now, we have two projects, Mustang Crossing and Bayfield East intersection. Transparency and oversight from town planner is what we need to represent our town. Stormwater is an ever-changing issue, and coordination between the town and development needs action and accurate record-keeping. Missteps with the developer of Dove Ranch occurred years ago, and now the citizens of Bayfield are financially responsible for paying for it. Enforcement of agreements between developer and the town, grant writing for affordable housing, and coordination between referral agencies, especially ditch companies, need to be acted upon and tracked. Town staff cannot be expected to take on these additional duties and keep up with the tasks that they were assigned when they were hired. A short-term moratorium is appropriate action until the town finds a permanent planner and town manager. Please take the time to review the information in the packet. The town of Monument, Colorado, has enacted a 30-day moratorium for the very same situation we find ourselves in. The article is in the packet along with information about what is a moratorium, reasons for a moratorium, and how to enact the ordinance for a moratorium. Developers, engineers, and building contractors will tell you that a moratorium will be detrimental to a small town. The mayor and the board of trustees can create a moratorium ordinance that won't be, do the right thing for Bayfield and its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Cassie, I am just on here to talk about my kind of process of being the first one to go under contract for the Pine River Commons subdivision, and how much that means to me. It's going to provide stable housing for my kids and just be a homeowner in the community that I love and that I've been in a part of for the last 12 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead. You'll both get a turn.
I really, really want to talk to you guys. So, my name's Paige Ludwig, I live at 9002 County Road 521, and I bet you all know why I'm here. So I was reviewing the board packet, getting ready for the meeting tonight, and I noticed that there are the last two meetings in there, and in reading those minutes, I noticed, to paraphrase, a statement that said that the outlet structure at the Mustang Crossing stormwater pond has been installed, so the problem should have been resolved. It's not. Not only is it resolved, it's just as bad, if not more so than it already was. So I wanted to ask, did any of you get the email that I sent to Katie, which is the CD PHE report, and did you read the report? Okay, well, since then, I have gotten another email from Annette Quill, who is the senior policy advisor for the Water Quality Control Division, and she reached out to me in response to an inquiry from Representative Barbara McLaughlin, who reached out on our behalf. All of this information is also in Michael Bennett's office, and he is reviewing it as well. The WQCDs looked into an investigation on what's going on and found that there are ongoing violations at Mustang Crossing, and that they are now subject to formal compliance orders and the imposition of civil penalties. Additionally, they have requested a response from CRG, who is the contractor working on that, with a plan on how they're going to resolve the issues, the main one being that the pond is inadequately sized for the subdivision. Just to give you an example, Tractor Supply site is just about seven and a half acres. The Mustang Crossing pond that we're dealing with is going to service an area that's just under 25 acres. The pond at Tractor Supply is twice the size of our pond. It's a significantly undersized pond. Their pond drains, our pond doesn't. There is still water sitting there from the last water event that was months ago. Not only does it not drain, but it constantly seeps, so we still have the ongoing problems. We also have a filtration system problem because the inlet and the outlet are too close together, so there's not enough room for the sediment to actually settle, and it doesn't filter anything out, so the water coming out is just as dirty as the water going in. So there's quite a few problems. We've had three different engineers review the plan, all three of them have come to the same opinion. It was a poorly designed plan, and it's a poorly constructed pond. So in addition to that, the CD PHE and the WQCD both state in their emails that once the town of Bayfield approves it and accepts it, which I've heard that there was a request for approval for the first phase, that is no longer considered construction. Those entities no longer have authority over it, it goes to the municipality, which is you guys. So any future issues, the long-term issues that we're going to continue to deal with are going to become the responsibility and the liability of the town of Bayfield. It also makes note of future potential issues that have already been identified, so they've got some other areas of concern. So we are asking you to please not sign off on Phase 1A until this situation is resolved, and to please absolutely do not allow them to start construction on the next phases. The problem is only going to continue to compound, they start selling lots in 1A, and they start building construction, more properties are, or land is going to be covered, less absorption, there's going to be even more water coming into the pond than there currently is. The problem's just going to continue to build instead of get better. So I'm just asking you all to think about how you would feel if this was your property, this was your home that was being destroyed because somebody implemented a really poor plan, and the person that approved this plan works for the town's engineering company. So I want you to remember that. We were working with SEH and our engineer to come up with a better plan. The town's engineer is the one who stepped in and said, "It's sufficient, you don't need to do anything else." Two different state agencies say it's not sufficient. So I'm asking for your help because you guys, at this point, are the only ones that can step in and do something about it, so thank you.
Good evening. So can I just have some clarity, is there going to be another public comment period on Lucy's email, or is that now as well?
Now.
Okay. So first of all, I want to endorse everything that Ms. Ludwig just stated. I was here when the town annexed the property from Mustang Crossing. I literally begged the town to think through the long-term consequences of that annexation. I literally was sneered at by board members, who said, "Oh, this is just an annexation, don't worry about it, don't worry your little head about it, we're going to deal with all of that down the line, this is just an annexation." Now here we are, three years later, and I'm telling you, it was not just an annexation when it was approved, many of you were not on the board at the time. It was not just an annexation, as I begged the town board to consider that very night. The annexation is the first step, it gets the ball rolling, and then we have to deal with all of these issues. The board refused at that time to consider the long-term consequences, and now here we are. The Mustang Crossing process has been, in my opinion, a terrible scar on Bayfield's history. We spent a lot of time as neighbors, ditch owners, ditch shareholders, working with town staff, working with engineers, trying to come up with a way to help them get their project moved along. We came up with certain conditions, we all thought, "Okay, great, these conditions have been imposed, we're all going to go back to living our lives again." And I'm sorry, I know, we probably got public notices, but we also have lives that do not involve watching every single public notice that comes in the mail to make sure this board and the planning commission are not undermining the work that was done, and so those conditions were changed, the requirements were alleviated. Now we're dealing, those of us over just east, remember, we are your very next-door neighbors, the Ludwig's and the Tones are your very next-door neighbors. We're now dealing with what I believe, I'm sorry to say, is the town's negligence in dealing with these issues. It's the stormwater, as Ms. Ludwig has said, the ditch company and the town are incurring massive attorney fees now to deal with what should have been addressed appropriately at the time the plans were reviewed. This stormwater issue is no surprise, it was raised at the time, and it should have been addressed appropriately then. I don't know why it wasn't. I know that the improvements to the ditch were appropriately addressed, and now we're hearing that there's been shortcuts taken on that issue. That affects every one of your eastern neighbors, it also affects the Southern Ute Tribe because the Campbell Lateral comes straight down through that property and eventually goes into tribal lands.
Shareholder in the Campbell Lateral.
They're the largest shareholder in the Campbell Lateral. I'm pretty sure we might be the second-largest, or the Ludwig's are, but it affects all of us, and now we're being told that there's going to be shortcuts taken in addressing those irrigation issues. It's been however many years, and we've not been informed of how our irrigation is going to be addressed because we've always had water come across the Ludwig property. The Mustang Crossing has been promises, promises, promises. I know I'm out of time. You, I really, you know, this is going to turn into litigation, it's going to be a black mark on the town of Bayfield for failing to deal with the most important environmental issue since the sewer. So I really am asking you to take this seriously, put a pause on everything until you get the right information, because this is really a bad mark on the town of Bayfield. I don't think I have any time to address Lucy's comment, I would just ask you to remember that there is a process underway, and I would request that that process be allowed to proceed, and I'm sure your attorneys can advise you on that. So let's, let's start focusing on substance and stop focusing on persons. That's my request, thank you.
Good evening, town board, thank you. Brad Blake with Pine River Commons, and I did just want to give a quick update, I was happy that Cassie came at the last meeting. I was asked, well, who are some of the people purchasing homes at the Pine River Commons? And she is the first, will be the first one to close, and she's a great example of why Judy and Charlie Albert really wanted a workforce housing project for people who live and work in our area to be able to get into a home. And so I was glad that she came and introduced herself, and I think that the impact will be far and wide as far as workforce homes are, that are available, and I think it's a great thing for the community. Charlie and I both really like the, and love the town of Bayfield, we've been building houses here for a long time. I've built a number of workforce homes here, and Bayfield's a great community, and having been in your position, I've actually been an elected official that sat on a dice as a county commissioner. I know some, some decisions aren't easy, and some are very hard to, to get consensus on. I can say, though, as a county commissioner, the, the people that I served with on that commission always made decisions based on what was good for the community, and I appreciate your thoughtfulness, your time. These are, these are tough positions to be in, and, and I can appreciate it maybe more than most. And so with that, I'll just say, thank you again. The town, as I mentioned in last week, or two week ago, two weeks ago meeting, the town has been great to work with, and we do appreciate their time, they're still great to work with. Usually when I have questions, I can just call and get answers. We realize it's a tough time right now with some loss of, of key roles in, in that, in the town, but we still feel like things are, things are moving forward, and we appreciate all the help with the people who are working with, for, and through the town of Bayfield. So thank you very much, and on behalf of people who will, who will be able to get into a home, I thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. David Black, 606 Buck Highway. I wanted to say a few words about stewardship, because that seems to be something that is sorely lacking. You know, I recall a leadership meeting years ago and watching a man literally go to tears over his love of land, love of the land. Well, we can love a lot of different things, you know, love your family, you can be a good steward in the family, you can be a good steward of the land, you can be a good steward of your community, and I'm here to call you out because I don't think you're being good stewards of the community. I mean, witness the fact that you've run off probably the finest, the finest city manager that you could have ever imagined. You ran her off. God, you guys got to be awfully proud of yourself. And then we have, I can't imagine, people on our board approaching people in not-so-public places, in their privacy of their homes. Come on, let's get real. I'm embarrassed for my community right now over this, absolutely embarrassed. I'm embarrassed for you as board members, that you had listened to this, and I'm really embarrassed for Counselor Hart's, I mean, really, and she needs to step down, she needs to step down. And honestly, so do you two.
Brian Blanchard, 627 Louisiana Drive. So here we are, and I think that it would be appropriate for the board to kind of take a breath, slow down a little bit, and come together as a board as best you can, but there's a lot of things going on, obviously, and I would encourage you, as we talked about months ago, some sort of strategic planning. I think that it will help the board immensely, and Wikipedia has a definition of strategic planning, I'm just going to read it and see if it makes sense to you all, to kind of keep on track and help the town out, and more importantly, help yourselves out. Nobody wants to see the situation we're in now, we'll worry about you guys too, and your health and your stress levels and all of that. So got to take a breath, do the best you can, but I think it's time to give it some thought. So Wikipedia, strategic planning. Strategic planning is organizational process of defining its strategy or direction and making decisions or allocating its resources to attain strategic goals. Furthermore, it may also extend to control mechanisms for guiding the implementation of the strategy itself. So I think you're capable as individuals and as a board, if not, if you cannot bring yourself to be reasonable about this and do the best for the town, step down. Don't do that to yourself. If you're over your head, step down, don't do that to yourself, it's not worth it, the stress and all of that to you, other people will step in. So if it doesn't work for you, it's not going to work for us as a town either. But thank you all for hanging in there as best you can, let's pull it together and do the best we can for the town.
Any other public input? Moving on to 1G, subject to motion, vote, and board approval, mayor, public statement. So trustee Moreland asked that we make a public statement, and we had one prepared by the attorney. Don't know what the whole board's viewpoint on that is, if you want to make that statement or not, but if you do, we'll need a motion to move forward.
Mayor, if I may, if I just might add on to your statement about how this came about.
Okay.
That's right?
Sure.
Yeah, correctly, both yourself and I believe trustee Moreland had expressed some desire that there'd be some sort of public statement with regards to the events that took place on December 4th. As a result, I drafted a statement that's fairly comprehensive and circulated it to each member of the board for review approximately five or six days ago, and I asked that if there were any comments or thoughts about the public statement that each member correspond with me directly. For the most part, the entire board did comment and made their feelings known about the public statement drafted presently. So my suggestion is, is that based upon that earlier review, that a motion be made, and if there is a second, that there perhaps be discussion with regards to that motion, and then ultimately a vote. And if the vote is for a public statement, and perhaps the public statement that was drafted, then at that time, a public statement perhaps will be read by the mayor. If there is a vote to say, "No, we don't want to," you know, if there's a majority vote to say, "No, we don't want to make a public statement," no public statement should be
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and see if we can get the public statement approved by the town trustees and have it read by the mayor.
I'll second.
I got a motion in a second, any discussion?
Actually, I, I am concerned in the second sentence, the, the statement, "Not by public opinion, this board will not publicly comment or opine further on the specifics of this matter." I have concern for that. I'm not sure that we could make this statement, and there's board members that would adhere to not making public comments about the incident or opining further on the specifics of the matter. So I'm in support of the rest of the spirit of this public statement, but again, you know, if, if there's going to be action by board members that are inappropriate, I will not be silenced by this, this public announcement. So I'm, I'm concerned about that piece. Otherwise, the spirit of the, the public announcement, I think, is, is great.
For me, I'm already, like, there's this, because of my relations, I'm already, I can't really speak to it anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah.
No opinions from me.
Well, you know, on this issue, trustee Moreland, I think it's a very general issue, and in fact, I think you can speak to it.
I can speak to the public statement.
To the public statement.
I can't speak to the incident.
Just as trustee Hart's would be able to speak to this public statement.
Correct, correct. Not enough that I'm going to recuse myself, but just... Not enough that I'm gonna recuse myself, but just...
Correct.
Where she has an issue of potential being able to state her opinion later on, I know I'm already, I can't do that because of my, I would have to recuse myself.
To the extent that a public statement is made, uh, based upon a majority vote of the board and, and, and the motion carries, I would urge each and every board member to adopt the, uh, majority vote of the board and adhere to the principles set forth in the statement itself.
Correct.
Is there any further, further discussion?
I, just to clarify, trustee Katz, uh, what part did you?
It's in the second sentence and it's the last, um, um, comment there, which says, "This board will not publicly comment or opine further on the specifics of this matter."
Thank you.
I have a question. With, um, I read that sentence, but this has already been very publicly commented on and cited in the Herald and everything else. So, is it just now, nothing else gets said?
We say nothing.
Okay. I don't know who said it to the Herald, but...
If we, if we agree to that, then that's where we go from this point.
Okay, alright.
There will, there will be public comment, but the board...
We're not, we're not...
Correct. Because ultimately, there may be some process whereby the board has to be in a position, in, in a quasi judicial position and has to be fair and impartial. And to the extent that any board member has shown themselves not to be fair and impartial, that is again, gonna be cause for recusal. So, uh, this is a, a great opportunity, uh, for, for this board to move in a particular direction, uh, that, um, suggests its impartiality.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zazaro.
Yes.
Trustee Katzus.
In good faith, I'll say yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. So, our official public statement on behalf of the Bayfield Town Board is, "As it is public knowledge that a member of the Board of Trustees has been investigated and criminally charged with harassment and misdemeanor for an act or actions occurring on December fourth, 2024 against another member of our community, the Board of Trustees states the following. While this board acknowledges that an accused citizen's right to be presumed innocent until proven guilty in a court of law and not by public opinion, this board will not publicly comment or opine further on the specifics of this matter. Still, overall, this board does not and will not condone harassment of any kind by elected officials upon its constituents. Therefore, while the board intends to allow the criminal justice system to play out concerning the December fourth, 2024 matter, the board reserves the right in the future to take any and all action available to it under the law to ensure that the citizens it serves are protected." That's the end of our statement. Next up is approval of the agenda. Has the board reviewed the agenda as presented this evening?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zazaro.
Yes.
Trustee Katzus.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next up is the Parks and Rec Community Update.
I brought you all a copy of the presentation. Is it okay if I bring it up to you?
Of course. I'm sure it's better than trying to see it on the screen.
Thank you for bringing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
My name's Mary Benson and I've been serving on the park committee since its inception. And I'm here to provide you with the update that I gave at the library on the twelfth of December. It's the survey results, basically. And, um, I just want to start out by saying a little bit of my credentials, just maybe to give it a little bit more weight as to what I'm providing to you. Um, I am a management consultant at my day job. Um, I do have a master's degree and I do surveys quite often in my work. So, it should give you some, you know, credence to what I'm about to provide. I also, um, asked a colleague to help me. And so, this person has a, a master's degree in statistics. And so, I'm, um, put his name here on the paper. He's the one who helped me with the prioritization of the twenty-one, twenty-two elements that we ask people to rate in priority order. Um, so, he's completely unbiased, completely qualified to do that. And so, I just wanted you to know where this information was coming from. Um, the first page or the second page of the agenda, I'm gonna go over just a little bit of background. This helped me a little bit to, uh, baseline myself and I think some people don't have the history. So, I'm going back to 2017 a little bit to just see where we started and how we got here today. Um, and then I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the committee's background and some of our efforts. And then I'm gonna go into the results and then, um, some initial next step recommendations. Of course, more work needs to be done, but that's the agenda for today. Um, so, the title of the town of Bay, Bayfield Master Park Plan Background, started in 2017 as far as, um, what I could find on your website. I know there's other documentation that goes back 2013, 2015. But I think this current plan that we're looking at for 2023 kind of, um, started with the groundwork studio work that happened in 2017. And it was to do an assessment for existing conditions, needs assessments and recommendation. And it, all the plans are Eagle, Joe Stevenson and Little Pine River Parks, which, um, I didn't fully understand. Um, when I see the map, I always see Joe Stevenson. And so, I wanted to point that out. And then in 2018 is when, um, the town selected groundwork studio to do the conceptual park plan. And it was supposed to function as a short, long-term, long-range guide for the improvement developments of parks, open space and recreation facilities and trails. Um, and it was to be phased and try to match the maximum great outdoors Colorado grant available at the time. And the three prompting, um, things that happened for that to be, um, something that the town wanted to do was the annex to 220 acres of land to be used for mostly housing, potentially doubling the size of the community. The existing arena property was no longer gonna be located south of the wastewater treatment facility, but stay at its location, so there needed to be updates. And then in 2020, GOCO revised their strategic plan and they increased funding. So, the town wanted to maximize that funding to help with this update. So, that's why that happened. So, in January 2023, uh, marked the beginning of this conceptual design revision process and creation of the new plan and updated programming and revised phasing. And, um, they developed concepts for improved outdoor recreation, um, area, which included those things that I mentioned and Pine River Senior Center area, the rodeo arena and then the 23.8 acre river bands, river bank parcel and the wastewater, um, facility treatment plan. So, the next slide goes into what changed. So, from twenty, um, from January through October of 23, um, the plan evolved over town meetings with, um, groundwork studio. And then the town gathered community feedback in 23. And 369 survey, uh, responses were received about the revisions. In August 23, the board, uh, and planning commission approved the revised, revised plan. And then upon approval, GWS developed the five-phase construction schedule and opinion of probable cost for the entire project. So, staff planned to, uh, start grant funding, pursuing grant funding in phase one, for phase one in 2024. And so, September 5th of 2023, the town approved wording to put a tax increase of 1% into the election that year on the November 7th ballot. Um, and it was going to do the 1% tax, uh, for 20 years, beginning January 1, 24 and ending December 31st, 20, 2043. And it would have, uh, pledged attention or that funding to the general fund. And it would be for Parks Culture and Heritage. So, um, Bayfield tax rate is now 3%. That's not including the other state, county and city sales tax rates. So, it would have increased it to 4%. That, uh, that measure did not pass. So, um, the changes to the plan from eighteen to 23 were to admit the stage and sand volleyball court and improvements at Eagle Park. This comes from, I put the sources and it's basically the documentation that you all have on your website is where this information derived from. It was gonna increase the playground area and incorporate a splash pad and play structures for two different age groups. Double the area of the top fields and skate park became a larger in-ground park with a pump track. And one basketball court was suggested, um, because other basketball events happened around town. And then we already talked about the rodeo arena, so that land is granted by the Bayfield School District. But in the new plan, there's a defined road and dedicated horse trailer parking, four pickleball courts plus bleachers and shaded areas for spectators near the Pine River Senior Center. So, that was the update to that senior center area. And then parking spaces were reduced from 229 down to 160, not including the horse trailer parking. And then the, near the wa, wastewater treatment facility, there was gonna be a one recreation field, a public restroom and a dog park. And then the access to the Pine River and perimeter trail didn't change from, uh, the plan from eighteen to 23. Any questions before I move on or any corrections that you all want to make to me? Okay. So, I'm gonna move on to, um, the Park Citizens Committee and how we were established. So, in, uh, May 31st is when a call for volunteers went out from the town to ask if people wanted to be a part of this committee and eight people responded. Um, in June 17th, the town sought input from the board to give, uh, the park committee our direction. Um, on June 27th, park was provided with the board's directed agenda. And so, I've listed it here. It's about, um, it says, "Based on the town's responses to the Master Park Plan, survey, comp plan, planning participation and community assessments, there seems to be an appetite to consider a tax to support the Master Park Plan. How do we get the word out? Prioritize the Master Park Plan elements. What elements of the Master Park Plan should be replaced, updated or included in the current operational budget prior to funding the greater Master Park Plan? And the committee should consider rec center size, elements, budget, location and funding." So, um, we started working. So, on June 27th, that was our first meeting. We've had, um, continual meetings since then. Uh, July, August, twice, September. Eleven people have, um, participated or contributed in those meetings. A high-level activity plan with timeline was created by one of the board members. They started with the July of 2025 date because we knew that if you wanted to go out with another ballot measure, that that was our deadline. So, we worked backwards from there to decide what we were gonna start focusing on. Um, June 28th, the next day, we developed the survey to try to get at the priority list that you asked us to get at. Um, we used a third-party software. We did not ask for names, so it was anonymous. And then from June 30th through October 31st is when the surveys were collected. We received 319 responses and that was just shy of the 369 that happened, um, from the previous survey. And then the park elements that were listed in the priority list were from the revised 2023 Master Park Plan. A pool element was added to get at the thing, um, that you asked us to do about what components could possibly be in a rec center. And then to get the word out, we were very active. So, we were at all of the town events. We advertised on social media, primarily Facebook and Nextdoor. Committee members created and distributed flyers around town in the different, um, HOA areas. We, they went to local businesses and posted them. Uh, we wrote an article and it was out to, in the town billing statement so that if people were on social media, they could still fill out the survey. And they, uh, collected raffle prizes to try and encourage at the end of the process to get people to respond to the survey. And every, um, time that we were out there, there was an increase in participation. So, um, the other thing that happened was a lot of people, uh, there was an open-ended common air, comment area, and so, a lot of people were already making comments. And one of them was, "Why are you focusing on this? Just focus on the police, just focus on the, you know, the other things. This isn't your responsibility." They didn't see the value of Parks and Recs to the town. So, research was conducted and a video was created to try and help with some education and to show the value of why we care, why this is our responsibility, why it's important to the community. Um, and that was posted on post, social media, but it is available to the town if you want to put it on your website. Um, it's pretty generic. It just says that we created it, but it's, um, something that you could view and post if you would like. The 11 people who participated, uh, the number kept changing as people became interested and became involved. And they weren't necessarily the first eight that volunteered. The next slide that you're gonna see is our plan, so working back from July. So, we are at the November, December timeframe on here and we have done everything that we said that we were going to do up to this point. The next up is a feasibility assessment and that's where the hard work comes. So, as far as costs, the only thing that we can do is look at the groundwork studio's estimated cost, which is from 2023 to kind of match it to elements. Um, I do want to say that I went to a team-up event yesterday and I met the Parks and Rec Director from, um, Cortez and we had a conversation and I asked him what I needed to do to make something like this happen. He said that groundwork studio did work for them and they're trying to, trying to correct it. He wasn't a huge fan. He felt like their costs were pretty high and that they, um, didn't give enough concept. They didn't give enough, um, details for people to make decisions on. So, that is feedback from somebody, um, who, you know, also has a rec center. So, I talked to them about the rec center. They gave me a point of contact, which I'll mention when, um, it's Ballard King. Uh, if you wanted to have an actual feasibility study done for recs and Parks and Rec, or rec center, um, he was highly, um, he was highly, uh, complimentary of them. He said that they will give you an operation plan. They will do the feasibility study to tell you, um, what concepts or what elements should be in the Parks and Recs or could be. Um, and, um, they, he just said that he's used them several times in different, um, cities that he's worked in and they've always done a good job for him. So, I'm throwing that out there to you. But as of now, the next step for our committee is to kind of look at phasing of the elements. that people said they wanted, look at, you know, that cost comparison, but we're guessing. Looks, look at some pros and cons, like of funding sources of, you know, just different things, like can some of these things bring revenue to help offset, offset some of the maintenance or things like that? Like somebody's mentioned pickleball courts there could be or other sporting events. You know, there can be tournaments and things like that that bring revenue into the town. So those are the types of things that I think should be considered next. And then we would do the cost estimate and then we would make the final recommendation based on what we saw to the board in April. And then you guys would decide in May whether you want to go out with a ballot measure and then communicate that decision to residents. And then July would be your deadline to get that wording onto the ballot. But I think the more, more information is what's needed at this point. Next, I'm gonna walk through the results. So the survey asked these questions. It asks, rank these elements from highest to lowest priority. So, and then they had an NA option. And so the NA option meant, the NA option meant that they didn't care. It wasn't important to them. And they also didn't have to answer all of the, all of them. So they could rank their top five, their, their top 10, their top 15, their top one and skip the other elements. And so if there was a skipped answer, that was ranked in the statistics as also that it wasn't important to them. The questions that ask about rec center components were about, were they open to a membership model? And the other one was about expanding out-of-school time programming for school-aged youth. That one was in there partially because out-of-school time could possibly be part of a rec center. And also, I, you know, I'm a little biased there because I thought that it was needed to be completely transparent. And then we ask about funding, so they could say individual things like special district tax or sales tax or property tax or private donations, or they could do a combo of those things, or they could say, don't fund anything. And then the only questions I asked about demographics was about where they reside. Because, I think I'm on slide 12. Because if there was a big difference between element priority listing for people who live in town and you're asking them for sales tax, then they would be the only ones who could vote on that. And so there, that's, I wanted to be able to split the data that way if I needed to.
So does that mean that big blue squares, people in town?
Big blue square. Oh, yeah, no, that's about fu- funding, I believe. You're, you're into the data. Yeah, you're into the data. Okay, so I want to tell you about how the statistician ranked the priority methodology. So he weighted number ones and NAs a little bit higher than the others because he felt like if you don't care, that's pretty strong. And if you care as a number one priority, that's stronger. And so, and then the no-response items were similar to the NA responses. And then his immediate observations were the indoor swimming pool was heavily favored over other items because it had the most priority ones and the most top fives. The pickleball, dog parts, paved road appear to be single-issue voter items because they were very high priority for some, but not important to others. So there was a lot of ones and a lot of NAs. And then he suggested that you might consider common area for music over dog parks because it would appeal to more residents. Very few NAs on the common area and the same amount of top 10 responses. And then additionally, the swimming pool is the largest number two priority, submitting it as an outlier in terms of being a very high preference item. Second after swimming pool for the second priorities were the splash pad and then paddlecraft access and takeout points is the next highest second priority, fits with outdoorsy theme of other top fives. So if I go into the data then, the element ranking, there's a top 10, there's a middle and then there's a bottom five. What changed in the out-of-town people who responded in the top four? Number four changes to common area vice dog parks for the out-of-town residents, which makes sense to me. They probably wouldn't come walk their dog, but they'd come to an event. And so that is your list of priority order based on what people responded, the 319 people who responded.
What I'm impressed by is the amount of surveys that were done are fairly consistent. 369 versus 319.
Yes.
So there's definitely a lot of interest
Yes.
in a master park plan of some sort.
Yes.
And so what I'm pulling out of your statistics is the swimming pool rated number one, the multi-use trail loop number two, river and fishing access, three, dog parks, four, and then common area for music and events and gatherings and four and five could be interchanged.
Yes.
Based on in and out of town.
Yes.
I think that it's really important to understand what the public wants with their money.
Right.
And so I really appreciate the way that this was ranked and that you had a third-party person come in and do the work. I was at your, your presentation on Thursday. I thought you did an exceptional job.
Thank you.
I'd like to see this survey document put on the town website, so all the people who did respond. Cause if I'm correct, there was response from the public, which was, why are you asking me this again? Why aren't we, I thought something was gonna get started.
Yes.
And nothing has been started.
They voted down the sales tax, so that's why.
Well, yes, no, I understand.
I also think there's another educational piece that I think could happen and the committee could probably put that together about what the difference is in the funding and the pros and cons of that. So a special district, I'm hearing that Forest Lakes probably is not gonna be open to that and they are the next largest community, so they would need to buy in. So, and then I think, I think prioritizing phasing, you know, is important. And, you know, maybe you start, you know, with parts of it and then, and then you prove that's successful and then you, and then you continue on. I think the worst thing that the town can do is nothing. I think it's been going on and on. I think when I looked at the next agenda item, I saw a lot of, you know, grant funding and this, and we can do this, and we can do this for energy, but I'm, and there's something in there about the irrigation. And I was like, well, if we do irrigation and we get funding for that and then we do a master park plan, are we just gonna tear up the irrigation that we just put in because it's not part of the park plan? It, I kind of go back to a little bit of what Brian said about, you know, strategic goals as to what do you as a, as a board want to achieve in your tenure? You know, what are your main priorities? And then you can funnel your decisions kind of through that lens and it'll just help it make easier for you to make those choices and decisions.
Well, and the other, the other thing that I found impressive was your survey identified how the public would want to pay for this.
Yes.
And the largest majority of 194 wanted a combination of a minimal sales tax increase, matching grant funding and private donations.
Right.
Which I think is a real, yeah, it's a real fair and balanced expectation by the public.
Right.
That we would resource all avenues.
All avenues.
Right. And not just put it on a tax. So I was also impressed by that outcome.
So the, the membership model was highly favorable, 85%. You mentioned about the funding and then the out-of-school care, that was also 85% of people said that they wanted something like that. We did a lot of work outside of the, the park committee by speaking with stakeholders about this. I know that there is a strategic, strategic planning effort that happened with the school district. And I know also that there is a place on the plan for Boys and Girls Club structure to be built at the middle school. I don't know if, we haven't been able to get ahold of the superintendent of schools. We have reached the Boys and Girls Club. We reached Brenda with the library. And the United Way representative came. And so we presented our survey results to them and we're still hoping that some progress can be made. But it would be really great if we could, as a town and the stakeholders and, you know, if people could talk amongst one another and be able to kind of team up to maybe make some of these things happen. Because like if we're trying to prioritize some elements for a rec center, maybe some of that can be in this Boys and Girls Club. You know, we can, if we share information and we can share resources, then we might be able to be more effective. So I think that's my main points and I probably used up all my time. So in your backup is all of the open-ended comments so that you can read through them. Some people have some pretty creative ideas. They are asking the town to be creative with funding. They're asking the town to be fiscally responsible when they're making these decisions. I think, you know, they definitely would like to see some things happen. And so I guess my question to you is, do we pursue on with our committee in doing those next steps? What would you like for us to do?
Well, I, I'm pretty impressed by the, the results. I think that the results speak to the need to keep pushing forward, to start to hone in. When I went to the school's strategic plan for their kind of capital improvements, they took, one of their big meetings was just as creative as you want to be. If you were God or a millionaire or billionaire, what would you do and how would you spend the money? And then they began to hone it down on what, what the needs were. So I think you're on the right track. I think you're, you've done really good work personally. And so I'm for you continuing forward with what you've got set as your schedule.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm behind it 100% as well. I also wanted to mention that on our last voting, ballot issue 1A was approved and that was to reallocate 70% of the county's lodgers tax to childcare programs and housing initiatives. So we may want to have a conversation with the county and ask them what that means for Bayfield because maybe they could also help a little bit in the allocation of funds to our area. Why shouldn't they? It always, always goes to everybody else. But we're the bedroom community that all the kids are at.
Right.
But yeah, I love what you're doing and, and I definitely want you to proceed on that.
Okay.
So it sounds to me like the ma- the majority of the support is in a rec center type building with having a place for the kids, like Boys and Girls Club.
Really? They said a pool. So I mean, you could start with a pool.
One and two were a pool and then, I mean, you had big support for like the, the Girls and Boys Clubs and after-school programs and that. I'm seeing 85% for both of those.
Yes.
And as a membership type thing for funding it also.
Yes.
So it seems like maybe, I don't know.
I feel like we're still at what components could be in a rec center. It would be nice to have conversations with the school district to see if they're planning to pursue building, that building and, you know, being able to house that there. The, the out-of-school time, there's probably some things that we wouldn't necessarily, we might not need to have here. Like I don't know what the, that would look like. Would they have basketball? Would they have? I don't know what that looks like. So we need more information. We also, I think, need to talk with other people who have done this. The information that I just got on Monday was two jewels, I thought, that were pretty powerful from just the city of Cortez. So that's something else that we can do is just make some phone calls and ask how they did it, how they, you know, how they funded it, all the different things. And then look at cost and look at, are there some ways that, you know, we can bring income in here by some of the things we're bringing? I mean, I, I found one foundation that would fund our pool if we had a swim team, which I could see where.
Sure, there'd be lots of volunteers for that.
I could see where the high schoolers and different people, like I see this as a, a really big win for the community if we do it correctly. And, you know, our kids can thrive and, you know, go on, I mean.
Well, and I think it's important to, to show the citizens that, that we're seriously considering, you know, their wants and their concerns. I believe that typically rec centers with pools have to have a certain population to really justify the expenditure. But again, you know, to your point, if there's other monies available to create those things and bring those things here, it's definitely a forward-looking support to our kids and our citizens.
And if people come here for other reasons, if they come here for a pickleball tournament, if they come here, I mean, it's gonna benefit the town businesses. You know, they'll see Bayfield as a place to come and visit, you know. There, there might be more revenue than just, you know, there, we might get traffic from, you know, up and down 160, people stopping through, people who are camping, you know. So I don't know.
I don't know if it's out of the scope of the committee to do something like this, but I think it'd be important for the citizens to see that, okay, a pool costs this much or estimated this is how much it would cost.
Yes.
These are your funding sources, potential. And, and this is, this is what it would take for ongoing care of the pool and these are your funding sources for that. And, and kind of break it down a little bit more so that they understand, you know.
That's the feasibility of it, right? Do they want that enough to, to do this?
Exactly.
What are we willing to sacrifice? What, you know?
Is a feasibility study something that's within the committee's scope or is this something that the town would need to?
The official feasibility study with that company, I think, is something, he said it'd probably be $10,000 for it. But you'll get a conceptual design. You will get a operating plan. You will get the, those types of things and what elements could be in a rec center. So it will be much more accurate. What we can do is take groundwork's bit estimates, which don't include a pool, but we can go out and we can ask, we can ask people, what would it cost? I mean, construction people, like all the, all the people, we can ask.
Is the company you're talking about the same one that did this?
There, that, he wasn't a fan of them.
Who's he?
The Parks and Recs Director in Cortez. He said that they, they didn't give enough detail and that they did some work in Cortez that they're trying to recover from. The Ballard, Ballard King was the company that he says specializes in, in rec center design. And so he was the one that, this gentleman recommended them because he's used them for three different places that he's worked and they've done a good job for reasonable price.
Well, I think due to our time here, that it would probably be a good idea that, is the board in favor of her continuing, the park committee continuing forward with their plan as noted in the packet? So you have our support.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. That was a lot.
Does the public have any questions?
Or comments?
Or comments?
Listen, 9205 County Road 521. Of course, you know, I'm not in the town.
Listen, I'd like 9205, County Road 521. Of course, you know, I'm not in the town. I'm in the county. But our fence line and the town's fence line is the same. But I've said before, I think a rec center would be the way to go. You could use it year-round. And I did a survey of my own this last summer, different weeks, different days, I drove by this park out here. 99.9% of the time, there was three people in that park. And that was in the summer when there was no school. It is good when they have baseball games and, you know.
Activities.
Doing's like the be, be frank thing and stuff like that. But I personally think more people would support a rec center. And I think some of the out-of-town people would too. Thank you.
Anyone else? Great job by the park committee. Appreciate all you've done. It's very good report, well detailed. Next up is McKinstry Energy Performance Contract Update.
Hello. We're going to share, I'll share the screen too. Do you all even see this?
Yes. Yes, we are.
Yes.
Thank you so much for having us today. I'm Ashley Bracken. I'm with McKinstry. We also have Erin Scrooge on the phone, who's our Director of Engineering on this project. And then we have Warren, who is on the phone from the Colorado Energy Office. We wanted to just give you all a brief update on where the Energy Performance Contract is, and some of the next steps and maybe feedback we're looking for you all over the next couple of months. So throughout this project, we've really focused on using the utility costs of the existing facilities within the town of Bayfield through efficiency improvements and onsite renewable energy. We're looking to fund end-of-life equipment upgrades through energy savings and grant funding, help to improve the comfort of some of the buildings, reduce maintenance challenges across the town, and leverage current grant stimulus funding, both at the state and federal level to create a budget-neutral project for the town. So the key progress in my town was awarded a million-dollar grant through the Department of Local Affairs last month to offset the initial project cost. Katie and Josh from the town of Bayfield also helped with this grant application.
Good job, Josh.
And a lot of the percentage. And so this is really an exciting mile project. We've so far identified a location for about 180 kilowatt power and heat on site to help with local energy production. The proposed project, as it is now, will yield about $745,000 in guaranteed utility savings over the course of the next 15 years. The proposed project will reduce energy use by about 24% across all of the facilities. We're addressing a lot of end-of-life equipment replacements to prevent emergency repairs and building shutdowns. It actively focuses on the overall comfort of the buildings. It will help boost the regional economy by leveraging local and regional subcontractors to help implement the project. So Energy Performance Contracting is a pretty well-established program in the state of Colorado. It's been around for nearly three decades. Warren on the phone is one of the technical experts that is free of the town of Bayfield and providing technical support throughout this process. McKinstry will guarantee the savings once construction is completed, making sure that Bayfield gets those $745,000 dollars in utility savings over the length of the project. And so it's a low-risk project for the town of Bayfield. To date, about 210 projects across the state of Colorado have been completed by local governments and higher education institutions, saving nearly $900 million in cash. So pretty well-established program. I'm going to hand it over to Erin to go through our current recommended list of measures.
Good, good, Ashley. So like Ashley said, we, we were successful in getting the $1 million dollar grant, but unfortunately, we were not successful in getting the $500,000 on the building electrification grant, which reduces our funding slightly for the project. And so what we've done in this board pack is, we put together a few scenarios based on the updated grant amounts to show you the impact of the reduced funding. And so in this first table here, this is the, the whole scope that we presented to you back in July of this year. Well, we kind of added some, some dots here to kind of distinguish between two package, or three different scenarios we wanted to present to you this evening. So the black number ones are scope measures that are included in, in all three scenarios that we're going to discuss. The blue number twos are only included in the base scope, which is again, the whole scope, but they're going to be removed from the two reduced scope scenario that we're, we're going to present to you. But the project consists of LED lighting, indoor water conservation, irrigation controllers, building up a lot of improvements such as air sealing and weather stripping, solar PV systems of, like Ashley said, 180 K that we toned up, ground source heat pump system at the senior center, and then a community engagement program. If you would scroll down for us, Ashley, here. Thank you. So, so this table shows the three different scenarios. The payback is calculated by essentially taking the project size, subtracting off the million dollars for the dollar grant, factoring in the Inflation Reduction Act investment tax credit amount, and then basically dividing the difference by the energy and operational savings. So that's how we arrive in the simple payback. So the first scenario is basically the whole project scope that we showed you back in July, but without the public building electrification grant. And as you can see, the simple payback jumped up from just a little bit over 12 years to about 20 years on that project. So still within the self-funding realm, but on the longer payback side. For the second scenario, we have removed the irrigation controllers and the community engagement program. And we elected to remove these two items from the scenario due to their relatively low utility cost savings relative to their implementation costs. And so it drops the payback down to about 17 years while still keeping the core measures in the project. And then for the last scenario here, we wanted to show what it would take to get back to our original target payback of 12 years. And in this case, it would require an upfront capital contribution of about $200,000. So if we, without the public building electrification grants, remove irrigation control and community engagement, kick in additional $200,000 of upfront capital, that gets us back to about our 12, 13-year payback term. So those are three different scenarios there. And like Ashley said, the big factors of the project are, you know, energy and operational savings, $745,000 over the length of the project, improved coverage and HACs for reliability at senior center. You know, you guys have some challenges there recently with the equipment failing. It addresses the third maintenance, such as the HVAC system at the senior center, as well as replacing some people that were less applying in Town Hall, senior center, and Parks Building, with the addition of onsite energy generation, which saves energy, reduces CO2 emissions, and is also a nice step within the future of electricity cost increases. The project is budget-neutral to the town because essentially through the EPC project, you're essentially diverting dollars from your utility budget to pay for the upgrade over a period of time. It's essentially budget-neutral to the town. And then lastly, by doing these five items now, you reduce the charge of past period dollars and costs. So far as the schedule, I would say what we're really kind of looking for at this part of the project, we're, we're probably about 70% through our investment grade audit. And we're on the cusp of achieving our final development. So what we're looking for from the town is kind of guidance on, you know, which of these three scenarios we should move forward with for final development. And for final development, that would be as a bid process involved with our original contractors to bid on the scope items. We'll do our guaranteed energy savings calculation. We'll generate the most we can audit before it's in the actual calendar, requiring financing at a point in time. So I would really like to recommend, if possible, if we could do a working session with the board sometime in January, or February next year. It's a really complicated, complicated project. And we just really want to make sure we're working, that we're aligned with the board's priorities for the project. And, you know, actually, I was about to do a live work session, we could get a talk about the different items, explain each measure in detail, answer any questions you might have. And just really make sure we're in lockstep before we kind of move forward with the final phase of development. But if we could give final direction sometime in February, we could do building construction in summer of 25.
I'm in favor of. That's okay. I'm in favor of the work session. I think it'll also give the public more opportunities to attend those meetings and, or that meeting, and kind of be abreast of what our intention is with this, with this Energy Performance Contract. So I'm, I'm for that.
I do have a question. Is the scenario one, the full scope, full project scope, is that also budget-neutral to the town? It seemed like that was more expensive. Okay.
It would be. It's just a longer, a longer period of time.
Gotcha. Okay.
It's budget-neutral over 20 years. Which we don't know what the costs are in 20 years. So I don't know how we can say it would be budget-neutral over 20 years, but.
Yeah. So the way it would, essentially, we'd lay out a cash flow or a footlong for the town, showing the upfront costs, any debt service payment, if it's going to be leased or financed, and then along with the energy savings, you know, annual energy savings each year. And essentially, you know, the state legislature or the, for contractings, the lease payments, the energy savings have to be for lease payments over the term of the, you know, the lease purchase or, or on the next period. So it doesn't get over any life budget neutral. And then we would include any inflationary energy escalation factors, as long as modeling interest associated with any financing there. You guys certainly don't have to finance, but if it is an option for the project.
Does the grant that we received keep us from getting more grants towards this project? Or, or are we only, only allowed to have that because we have to match funds?
No, it does not exclude you from getting other grants. We're still pursuing one additional geothermal energy grant through the state that's worth approximately $60,000 to $72,000. So the obligation for that one is due on January 3. So we'll probably find out about that one in, in late January or early January. There's no, no required match on that particular grant. And, you know, at any point in time, the calendar lets out the rolling grant. So if you did get a grant, you would not have to move forward, but just, you know, release the funds back to the, the grant program.
Gotcha. Thank you. And I'm in agreements as well of doing a work session in January.
January? We'd probably be better off in February.
They're trying to get started in February, aren't they? They recommended January. Do we have that much going on on the board in January?
We don't even have a town manager.
No, but a work session's produced by them. So it's not, not like you need, they are expertise to do a work session.
I'd be okay with January.
Laura, January, February?
January, I think, would be good. I mean, we've got to keep things moving.
Okay. So, well, is trustee Zizaro still on there?
Yeah, I would be up for hearing a little bit more about this in January or in February than I, I do know right now. I'm trying to use it. We don't tell me anything. So as much as I want to move forward with this, I, I guess I just need to hear Lori to understand what this undertaking is. And then who wants to jump out would even be the point first before this is played.
Lori, I'm the person for this project.
Use the microphone. Yeah.
Okay. So thanks for that. I just wasn't sure. Can you guys hear me again? Sorry, I'm losing my voice.
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Okay.
So, yeah, it sounds like the board wants to move forward with the January meeting. Do you guys have a date in mind? Or you want us to pick one?
Can you ever work back for the town?
You want to do it if.
Just before.
We would like to go in.
Before board meeting? How, how long, how long do you think this is going to take? Like an hour, two hours?
At least an hour. So you think, Ashley, if you could give us more time, depending on what kind of questions you might have.
Can I think, maybe 30 or 40 minutes of content and then 20 to 30 minutes of questions? There are some people might have a lot of questions. So we get to have a note of introduction.
So you want to go 5 o'clock before one of our meetings?
Yeah, I think what we should do is that we should just say, yes, we want to meet with them in January. And then at the beginning of January, let's schedule that date and that time. Does that sound good? I think we'll have more information too by then.
All right.
I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah.
That we schedule, we schedule with them in early January.
Okay.
But I would also request that it's on a night of a board meeting.
Yes, absolutely. We'll do that.
Any that we can do that way.
Yeah, we could do a 5 o'clock pre-work session.
Basically looking at our second meeting in January.
Yeah.
At 5.
Sure. I'm just not sure what we do have on the docket for January. And I just wanted to take a look. It might be the first week in January would be better, but I'm not sure. So anyways, I'm good with either. I can go either the first or the second meeting. But I think prior.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm, just January's fine for me. Either one, just as long as it's before. I'm good. Yeah.
Okay. So more than likely, the second meeting in January.
So Josh, will you be our communicator as far as?
With Dustin and whoever.
Great. Perfect. Okay. Excellent. That works. Okay. So they'll be hearing from us. Thank you. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Erin and Ashley.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Next up, approval of minutes, planning commission appointment, and department reports. Approval of the minutes for December 3, 2024.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes dated December 3, 2024.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro. Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Marlin.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Approval of the minutes for December 11, 2024.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes dated December 11, 2024.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro. Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Marlin.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Public Works Director report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. I didn't get the water production charts out. Over the Thanksgiving weekend, we had some operators out. So those spreadsheets were updated. Anyway, we'll have you the end of the year and have you a full 2024 and next month meeting. So I apologize for that. We did have 51 locates. That's about average for us for the month. So a lot of that's attributed to the fiber optic drops. And people are still signing up for the clear networks and the high-speed internet. I guess just for sake of time, the meter reading and the meter read delays, all the physical equipment is operating well and functional. The majority of the large discrepancies that we found through billing have been corrected. So we should be back on track. And there shouldn't be any further delays as far as the meter reads. We still, we're seeing a couple different errors pop up here and there, but nothing majorly concerning. So everything should be back on track. Thanks to administration staff and stuff for really working through that. So.
Good job, staff.
All that should be, should be back up and running. All that should be should be back up and running.
No more $40,000 bills. I'll hold you to that.
Right. The only other thing I would bring up is we are seeing some icing on the Buck Highway. The guys have been working on that as well. It's just from the hillside seepage that's coming out, but it's been so cold at night, it's freezing into the travel lanes. So we've been working on that and trying to keep that remediated and that road safe and passable.
Do we have any, have we, like, let the public know a little bit that there's a problem over there, maybe? Might be a good idea.
Yeah. We can do that.
Do social media.
Kelly already contacted me and asked me why I had a snowplow out there when there's no snow, so.
Well, I don't mean snow, but at least let them know it's been icy there and we're working on it, but just...
We can get something out and notification.
To help.
Other than that, I really don't have a whole lot else unless you guys have any questions.
Well, I noticed under your staff and administration that with multiple subdivisions throughout Bayfield, it's been very challenging for you to do your job and the community development director job.
Yeah, we're just trying to keep everybody's comments and concerns addressed as best we can during the transition, so we've been fielding a lot of those phone calls and questions, so. We try and keep moving in the right direction, I think is a good step forward.
It might be worth considering just a suspension of development for just a month or so until we see if we've got a...
You can't without a moratorium.
Well, that's what I mean.
Oh. Without a...
I don't agree.
Yeah. Well, and I'm just looking at a discussion.
Not even a vote on that or anything.
But there's lots of pros and cons for a moratorium, but reading into what happened in Monument, they had the same problem. They didn't have a community development director, lots of developments in the pipeline and coming up, and they really realized that without oversight, issues were happening with developments that were really a problem. And we're hearing we have issues right now that we need to address some way, somehow, and we need guidance on that. So I'm just interested in whether we need to have a discussion about that, put it on the agenda. I'm just throwing that out there as something we should consider.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I have one more question. So you said there's, your report says there's final inspection on Mustang Crossing?
Yeah, we were out there with the town engineer at Mustang Crossing, going through there. We're looking at public improvements, water sewer system, storm drains, and just for all transparency, we are doing full survey of the entire stormwater system out there right now through SGM, so they'll be tabulating an actual third-party report for that detention pond and the stormwater system for us that will be presented to you as well.
We'll see that before final approval.
All of those improvements are going to need to come to you guys for that final. None of that will be done administratively. So like Ms. Ludwig was talking about earlier, that'll come that'll come before the board, before any of that's accepted.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So on the comments, did they address that stormwater, especially a lot of water that sits and they took the north or the, I guess it's northeast, but that property that was called spinning in? There's that water, somebody needs to go out and look at that because we're flooding out in our subdivision, and that needs to be taken, I pretty second concern, before that up put in and brought to the board, and it's still happening, and we haven't had any rain, any snow. I think somebody needs to get on this boat instead of keep allowing to build, and then we're having to pay $10 for something that the contact was supposed to get the money to the town to take care of that, and it didn't happen. Now we're all putting that in our pocket. I think things need to happen.
Well, and Jeremy, I had reached out to you regarding Catherine's comment. Do you want to comment about that? So Lucy has an update as far as what became of that.
So with all of the stormwater facilities that you're going to see, as well as tractor supply, Pine River Commons, Mustang Crossing, all those, we're doing a third-party survey and review of all the final to make sure that they are constructed, the elevations match, the volumes are correct as what's been designed and reported. So the town hasn't ever done that in the past, and it's something that we are doing now to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to address our downstream users as well as protect the town as well, I mean, and make sure that they're designed appropriately. So Pine River Commons will be subject to the same scrutiny, and then we've also had the conversations and speaking with Mr. Mayor and trustee Katzos as well, is updating some of the design standards for stormwater detention ponds. They're pretty vague right now. We can be more stringent than the state, we just can't be less. And so that conversation's been had with town engineer to maybe adopts a little bit stricter standards for detention and stormwater moving forward. So you'll see some of those things coming in 2025. We are aware of, we've had a lot of the same concerns come from Pine River Commons stormwater that we've had from Mustang Crossing stormwater, so we're trying to work through that and make sure we have some better protections in the design standards. Yeah.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Chief of Police.
Mayor, Board of Trustees. Not much to say about November. What needs to be noted is our total events, we doubled our call volume since last year, and it's been noted for every month for the past seven months that we've been doubling from 2023's call volume, so we're getting swamped. One thing I didn't note in here is our new detective primarily works out of the office now because of all the caseload we do take on now, and she's handling all follow-up investigations of any crime that comes in, so she's been really busy. And as far as traffic stops, all the officers are out there trying to do traffic enforcement, safety all throughout the town, so I'm hoping the citizens kind of see us out there and that we are trying to make sure everybody's safe. If you guys have any other questions?
So the one vacant position that you're hoping to fill, do you still have candidates for that that you're...
No. As soon as the new year gets here, we're going to start advertising for a lateral position and try to bring one in that way. We tested, I think, what was it, four people, and none of them went beyond the interview stage.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Why do you think that there's such an increase in the number of calls that you're responding to?
Because back in June, I redirected everybody to make sure they are calling out on everything they're doing instead of just saying they did something and telling me, hey, we were busier and not having it documented in the CAD system. So now that Spillman's up and running, we can enter all of our data accordingly, and so now we're actually pulling out the proper data because we're entering everything correctly now.
So better paperwork, essentially better paperwork is what you're saying?
Yes. We did not have Spillman before June or May this year. Now that we got Spillman fully implemented, we're able to put all of our calls in that we're supposed to be doing. They weren't doing that in previous years. House checks, other things, business checks, extra patrols, all that stuff was not getting documented within the CAD system. It was all getting paper documented, and they would hand it in. So I can't go back for several years seeing what they're doing. I can now, starting in June, go back and see what everybody's been doing since then. So our data collection is top-notch now.
Well, and I like that accountability, so I think that's great.
And just for the public's awareness, events aren't necessarily they called because there was something wrong.
It could be a dog barking. It could be anything.
It could just be driving down the street to do extra patrols.
Any other questions? HR Director report.
All right. Good evening. Payroll is getting better, so this is a good thing. We're kind of working now on the backend of all the uploads for Para and FPPA and also for the GL code for Casell. So it's kind of what we're working on. We launched the new timekeeping system, which honestly was horrible. Pretty much staff had kind of like how to figure out how to navigate the system, but by the end of the two weeks, I think we got it figured out and hopefully be better these next two weeks. Let's see, we interviewed for community development director and planner. We hope to bring a few people back at the beginning of the year. I'm also posted for a senior center coordinator, also create a graphic that's going to go out in the newsletter, so I did post for that as well, also working with KRW, make sure they have all the information they need to post for the town manager. That's going to be posted at the beginning of the year. And then I would just like to say, we had a fantastic holiday party on Saturday. We did it at Moody's on Mill Street. It's a beautiful venue, it was decorated for the holidays, so we had such a great time. We also had Brenda's Cafe that catered, so thank you to all the staff and board members that attended, and we had a lot of fun and games, so I thought it was a great time. Anything else?
Well, I'd like to know what the next plan is for an interim. Do we have any thoughts about that, or...
Well, I posted for an interim, too. Posted for an interim, and then I think possibly next steps is possibly meeting in January for a work session, kind of talk about if there are staff who's going to be taking on additional duties while we wait to hire for the interim, as well as to hire for the permanent town manager.
I think we need to prioritize that, so I would say absolutely we need to have a work session or a special meeting to get that sorted out, so.
Okay.
Can we work on that for the first meeting in January?
Yes.
Please?
Yep.
Again, starting early?
Okay.
I think in the meantime, because there's just a short period of time, like a week and a half, that we need to identify who is going to be the main person if there's any issues that handles it.
I concur.
So maybe we can take care of that when we talk about 5E?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Last days for December 27th for Carrie and Remote for Katie, and December 27th and Nicole and December 31st.
Do you want me to talk about the senior center rentals?
Yes. Please.
So Carrie will not be working at all in January, so we have one rental that we're going to honor that Carrie and Janice will honor, but after any rentals will cease with spending until February, until we have possibly somebody of the war and Carrie freedom of housing those rentals for the seniors letter.
Okay. So there's already one scheduled, and we're just going to continue on with that?
Correct.
Does the board have any questions?
Nope.
Financial budget and action agenda, November 24, financial statements.
So the financial statements for November were included in your packet. As I noted in my report, all the funds are trending as expected. We did receive, I requested reimbursement for some grant funding for the SUP project, and we did receive that $229,000 in November. I did submit another request for reimbursement today, and I'll have another one probably the end of next week, so we should, we're looking at getting another $600,000 in the month of December, so, but we have started those grant reimbursements. As Marie had noted in her report, the only thing that is, the numbers in payroll in salary and benefits are skewed in our financial statements for the month of November, and that's due to the fact the third-party payroll vendor did not have reports back to us in time to upload to the general ledger to reflect the payroll in our financial statements. They have provided us those reports. I'm working with Marie. We will have that worked out by week's end, so in November, or in December, when I give financial reports, it'll get caught up. You'll see that November and December both will be in there.
You mean January? In January?
When I give them to you in January. Yeah.
Unless you want to have, unless you want to have another meeting next week or something.
No, no. I don't have any more time for meetings. Sorry, I don't have any more hours in my day.
You're fine.
Yeah. The, but everything else is going as expected. Total interest in our caller trust accounts for the month of November was $38,500, and our sales tax is continuing to be strong and move in the right direction, so that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Questions?
Nope. Makes sense.
Perfect.
Sales tax report?
With the action agenda.
My, sorry, I got ahead of myself. I'm sorry.
Wait one second.
Does the board have any questions for the financial statements?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve November 2024 financial statements with the knowledge that some catch-up is done on the next reporting.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustees Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Sales tax report. Purchased, no.
It's included in the report.
It's already included.
Yeah. You just move on.
Yeah. Purchased two standby generators for $100,000.
So I gave you guys my report earlier, and I'm going to ask for money. So the purchase request that you guys got is for the two standby generators, one for the original water treatment facility and the mid-tank booster pump station. So we had these sourced out. There is a purchase agreement that goes along with it if it was approved that'll lead to be signed, preferably by the mayor just because of the monetary expenditure. This is our last large capital improvement expenditure for 2024, so with your approval tonight, we can get that purchase contract back. We want to purchase these generators this year because there's about a six-month lead time, so we're hoping if we can get the contract executed and back in, we should have them around May, June of next year, and then we'll go through the construction, concrete pads, installation, wiring, and all that stuff in 2025.
Do you know will this hit next year's budget, or will it hit this year's because he signs it this year?
It'll be this year's, and that's what we're trying to do.
Good deal.
We're trying to keep that carryover. Remember, the beginning of this year, we had some of those projects, we weren't able to get done the sidewalk and some stuff, we carried over. We're trying to keep those hard stops in those calendar years, it's way easier for Kathy.
Yes.
And it's not as confusing for you guys as well, too, so with your approval, we'd like to move forward with that purchase contract.
Any questions by the board?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the $100,000 expenditure for backup generators in the water fund from Rocky Mountain Region Corp. and authorize Jeremy Schultz to sign the agreement.
I thought we were asking Mayor Ah because of the dollar amount.
I'm signing it, not Jeremy.
I, well, it says Jeremy.
I know, but he just talked about having Mayor.
Oh, gotcha. Never mind. The mayor.
It will be the mayor.
I'll second, knowing that it was adjusted to the mayor to sign for that, and I also just want to make a quick comment that it is in the expenditure budget for 2024. That's why I didn't ask. That was my second.
Okay. I got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Morven Veteran Improvement Grant.
I just wanted to make sure that the list was given to the Board of Trustees. We paid the vendors directly, so you're going to see those on discourses. We went just a little bit over, however, we had just a tad left in that grant process. So anyway, Michael Morven was very happy that we were able to get that information out, the money out, and the veterans that we helped are very grateful for their listens.
Yay.
Yeah, that's fabulous.
Thank you to the Morvans. That's amazing what they did for the community. Very appreciated.
Next is express bill pay message.
So trustee Zizaro was concerned that those that have bill pay would get that free mon... month withdrawal from their bank, so we did send this out in express bill pay, and I'd probably suggest with the trash pickup transition, probably something to go out on express bill pay as well as what we're doing in the newsletter as well, would be my suggestion.
Agreed.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Hey, so who would be putting that together to have a notice go out for in express bill pay?
So I, I put together a item in the newsletter, and I can certainly cut it down so it'll go out into the express bill pay. In the area where I'm at, I actually have express bill pay, and they send the newsletter through express bill pay, so that could be just another option. Kristen actually figured that out, I think, I think, you know, if that's a possibility, sending out that PDF, maybe something to get the word out.
I really appreciate the work that staff did to make sure that it was just however many ways we could get that communication out so that auto pay folks would know that that was going to hit them, so if they wanted to undo auto pay, they could, and I think it's really smart being able to communicate with our customers any other changes that are coming our way, so I, I love that, and kudos to Kristen for figuring out how to do that in the express bill pay.
Awesome. I think we're moving to action agenda, item A.
Yes, we are, and you're taking over.
That's correct. Mayor Ah is recusing himself. Hey, Mark, would you get the doors, please? Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to Resolution 643, a resolution regarding Pine River Commons deed restriction enforcement.
Good evening, everybody. Dan Murphy from SEH, probably wondering why I'm sitting over here, I'm the hired consultant for the town. I've been in the area for quite some time doing this work, so I'm happy to be here helping you all out. Pretty much the, the packet, or the, the resolution the board needs to consider is included in your packet, specifically is for the Pine River Commons development. They're looking to deed restrict five units. This is a fairly common practice. I think the only comment I would have, this is typically done throughout the process, not at the end. That'd be, it's not up for me to deal with, that's for the town, but typically these are negotiated and signed upon plat recording as well, so we're trying to get this done for them. I do know Brad, I've known him for quite some time, I've read through the agreement with the town's attorney as well, I have no comments on it, except for one that I found today, it's item, it's in the recitals, item B. It speaks to your exhibit A that identifies the five units. The current exhibit A in the packet doesn't identify which five units are they going to be, I believe there's about 10 of them. I, I don't have the plat open in front of me, so I would request the board to have an edit made to the exhibit A prior to signature to identify the five units. If you go to the exhibit A, it's currently just the legal description of the entire property. Other than that, and the communities elsewhere I work with, this is pretty standard practice. I think Brad and Charlie have done a great job getting an affordable housing development on the ground in Bayfield, and I'm happy to answer any question you guys have about it.
Just to make sure I understand, we need to edit exhibit A prior to the final plat, is that what you said?
No, the plat's already been recorded and so have the covenants with it. I would make just a recommendation to you all is to have the exhibit A updated, to try to stay inside of my lane with what we do. I could have Brad or Charlie just deliver an updated copy of the exhibit A to me before I record it for the town. That'd probably be the most efficient for them, so that way you, they can obtain signatures they need, hopefully this evening. They could present to me an updated exhibit A and I'll just go record it for you guys.
Great. Yeah, we need to get this done, so.
Correct.
No holds up.
Did you get that written down to how it would be?
Yeah.
So do you need to track exhibit A prior to the five units? Yeah. Provide them with exhibit before recording.
Okay.
That's an important part.
Yeah. All right. Do we have any discussion on this that's needed? Any comments from the? Go ahead, Brad.
Well, Brad is coming up, I also had the opportunity to read through the deed restriction, made a few comments, those were met, some of my changes and so forth, and deed restriction looks good. Again, the board needs to be aware that it is contracted with Homes Fund to do a lot of the enforcement and management to make sure that there are qualified buyers in the pipeline and that people remain qualified and so forth. Again, to the extent that Homes Fund is no longer a part of the program, it does fall to the town of Bayfield to take on that enforcement and management role. Hopefully that will not be the case.
Yeah, let's hope not. Or if it does, then let's, let's try to find another person to, entity to cover it.
Again, Brad Blake with Pine River Commons. We thought that all our, that our exhibit A was updated, but if not, we can do it right away and.
Yeah, it may be just in the packet.
I'm pretty sure it's updated, and that it is completed. Pam Moore with the Homes Fund is here tonight, and she was kind enough to come if you had any questions. Homes Fund is an excellent nonprofit that helps with these types of projects. This is not an unusual project as far as deed restrictions go, and I don't anticipate Homes Fund going anywhere anytime soon. As a matter of fact, I've worked and seen the work that they have done for quite a, quite a number of years now, but if you do have any questions, we would be happy to answer them, and especially if you have any questions for the Homes Fund, we'd be happy to have Pam come up. But the deed restrictions, very common, very standard deed restriction, nothing out of the ordinary. Our intent is to have all 66 units deed restricted for workforce housing, and the deed restrictions are, are pretty simple. It, it just doesn't allow people to come in and purchase up the units for resale, or, or to make a profit on them. If the person selling the home has a loan through Homes Fund, they obviously have to pay that back first, but Homes Fund has been great to help people with down payment assistance and, and training, and any, really, any, anything that goes to getting a, a mortgage. These are, these are great helps for people, and I think that if you look at the, the program that Homes Fund has, you'll see that it's, it's very strict in a lot of ways, but very helpful in a lot of ways, so, thank you. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and also the true expert is, is really in the room, that's Pam.
And we're very familiar with Homes Fund because they, they also do our Fox Farm deed restrictions as well, and we have also hired them to work on our Cinnamon Heights project, so, thank you for coming, Pam. Do you guys have any questions for her?
I know.
All right, with no questions and no other comment from the crowd here, I would entertain a motion.
Let me see if I can get this right. Trustee Moreland, I'd like to make a motion to update, and update exhibit A.
You gotta approve the resolution first.
Oh, sorry, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 643, and in that, update exhibit A prior to the final signing to include the five units, and that's it?
And who was signed? I think.
Oh, very good.
There is a blank.
If I can make a edit, I think, in my advice, unless Michael corrects me, I think it's all right for the town to sign it, as long as they provide me the document prior to
So. Would that be the mayor?
The mayor can't because he's recused himself, and we don't have the mayor pro tem here, so are you saying a staff member is okay to sign it?
No, totally, no.
You're saying the trustee?
Yes.
Okay, I was trying to clarify that.
What I'm saying is to expedite Pine River accomplishing this, to ensure some closings that are on the record right now. They could provide me the document prior to recordation of it, but I, I think that the language should speak that you should be afforded the ability to sign it tonight if you're comfortable with that, just so long as they get it to me literally before I hand it to Tiffany to get it recorded.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. So I need to add that. Okay, all right, one more time. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 643 with the edit of exhibit A to include the five units and to be signed by trustee Moreland this evening.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All right, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustees Azaro? Trustee Katzos?
Yes.
Trustee Moreland?
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin?
Yes.
All right, you can bring Mayor Ah back in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I was trying to read your chicken script.
I know, I'm sorry.
I was like, boy, I'm struggling with this one right here. Plus my balloon head right now isn't helping the situation.
Oh, I bet. That wasn't too long. We tried to keep you out there as long as we could. Just kidding.
There's no heat out there.
No heat?
No.
Oh, I bet it's cold.
Okay.
So did the resolution pass?
Yes.
In case anybody asks me tomorrow.
Yep.
It didn't?
It did, it did.
I'll be signing it tonight.
So from a procedural standpoint, the resolution as it's presently presented has the mayor pro tem signature line on there. Dustin will change that out and put trustee Moreland's signature block on there for her signature.
Perfect.
Okay?
Great, thank you.
Good to know. All right, we are on 5B.
Yeah, I'm catching up on my computer. As soon as I get there, I'll start.
101.
Next up is Resolution 644, Town of Bayfield, SWTPR 2050 Regional Transportation Plan Priorities.
Yeah, so I did provide the documents from the last Southwest TPR meeting to trustee Nyberg. They are asking for the town or all agencies' priorities by the 10th of January, and because the east intersection was not on the Southwest TPR list at all when I started, I thought I'd do a resolution just to make sure that there's some documentation that goes directly to Southwest TPR via Shaq.
Perfect.
Yep. I agree.
So, so the, I, I have a question. The two priorities on the resolution are the east intersection and the 160 pedestrian But the pedestrian crossing already got shut down, did it not?
It's a feasibility study did not warrant it at this time. The reason is probably because when they were doing traffic counts and pedestrian counts, people weren't crossing the pedestrian pathway. When Nicole closed this out, she made the recommendation of the board keeping this as a priority, even if you have the east intersection completed, you're still going to probably want a pedestrian crossway, and if you slow traffic down, you're gonna, you're really going to need at some point, and this is 2050 plan, so you can do it in the next 26 years if you want, as long as it's on the list. If you have another priority, you know, it's something you can also add, but you have to give it to them before the 10th of January.
Yeah, I'd rather just leave it on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Leave it eventually.
It's still an ongoing issue.
Right, yeah.
Good question, though.
Does the board have any other questions?
No, makes sense to me.
Yep.
I got, I have one question. So once we sign this resolution, is this something we would get to Southwest TPR, or should we just, we just hang on to it? What do we, what's, what's our action with that?
If you're talking to me, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, I have to like be right on the microphone to be heard. My question was, once we have, if we approve this resolution, do we submit it to Southwest TPR? What do we do with it? Just goes on record that we want to do it, but does that, is that everything Southwest TPR needs to make sure we're on the list?
I, I'm sorry, I, the last part, I couldn't hear what you were saying.
I just want to make sure our, our projects get on the list for Southwest TPR? Do we need to submit this to them? The resolution?
I, I would, I would submit something to them, whether it's a resolution or something in writing, to make sure at least the east intersection gets on the list. Currently, right now, it's at the bottom of the list, so we did get it on between Nancy Dossdale, we got it on the list, but it was unfunded.
So it sounds like a yes, that we just need to get this resolution to TPR?
Yeah, thanks, Katie. I think we'll need to have like a staff member get it over to them.
I'm looking right at him.
It starts with a D, ends with an N.
Yeah, I was already thinking about it earlier today.
Okay.
So I'm looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 644.
I'll second your resolution. On the motion?
I got a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustees Azaro?
Yes.
Trustee Katzos?
Yes.
Trustee Moreland?
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin?
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Waste Management Contract Roll-Off Pickup?
So, tell attorney George Mack to go through the agreement with waste management. I want to make sure that the addendum is as initial of some sort, to make sure that it's part of the agreement, an addendum regarding appropriation.
I'm seeing it here. I didn't have any questions on it, did you?
I'm not sure I understood what she just said.
So the roll-off?
Those are the.
Yeah.
Those are the bigger business ones that we couldn't get covered with the current.
Oh, okay.
One. So they're going to be responsible for those?
What's the pleasure of the board?
I don't have, it seemed pretty straightforward to me. There was nothing that stood out in the documentation, and we anticipated this cost, so I think we're good, or I think it's good.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Waste Management Contract for the roll-offs.
And I'll second.
Got a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Azaro? Trustee Katzos?
Yes.
Trustee Moreland?
Yes.
Trustee McLaurin?
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Senior Services, La Plata County IGA?
So this is just a little bit of revenue, so basically table setup, the county used to have at first, and then did this. This table setup is just kind of minor assistance, and right now, our senior center coordinator does this. There was just a minor update that the county provided, just wanted to make sure that Carrie took a look at that. It just looked asking for the full name versus probably, you know, the common name used and any of the guests that come with, at senior center, would be on that list.
So this is just annual renewing?
Yeah, I have a question. Is the other individual who was Carrie's backup, is she going to be able to provide the expense that Carrie was providing? Because I think it was listed in the IGA, the expectations of what our staff would do to prepare for lunch.
Yes.
So do we, is that covered?
Yes, Camus is, is prepared to do that in January, yes.
Thank you for confirming that.
Does the board have any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Senior Services, La Plata IGA.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
I got a motion in two seconds. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Katsos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Status of motion and vote concerning contract execution for interim town manager, which we don't have.
So basically, if I may, Mr. Mayor, this is Michael Goldman speaking, your town attorney. The, the board had basically two candidates for an interim manager. The first candidate pretty much took his name out while negotiations were going on. Second candidate, there was some further check into the references and so forth. They didn't really pan out. There was some, some negative issues, and so we are really, at this point, without the prospect of an interim manager. And so as Ms. Kim had suggested earlier, perhaps this board can set up a work session for the beginning of January at the first meeting, prior to the first meeting, a work session whereby their, this board perhaps entertains the memo that was drafted by some of the staff members, and, and meet with the staff that drafted that memo to discuss the prospect of, they're taking on some interim duties that are above and beyond that which they're already doing, and have that discussion and see whether or not that's something that's plausible to staff and, and the board in the interim.
Yeah.
I would, I would like the staff that are mentioned for those additional duties to be present during that. That way, if we have questions for them specifically, we can ask them.
Sure.
Yep.
Sure, I think I'd be very productive for both staff and, and the board, and see what can be worked out, and I would also suggest that your HR director be present for that as well.
Yes, and can we get the list again in, in our emails so that we can review it ourselves prior to that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So would the board like to do that?
First meeting?
Yeah.
Well, prior to the first meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, same day.
Yep.
Maybe starting at five o'clock?
The seventh at five, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just make sure I don't have anything going on.
I know.
I have a question, and this might need to be for staff. Since we will be without a town manager on the 27th, and this meeting we're talking about is January 7th, do we need to have a point person for those days in between?
Yes.
Like, I don't know what that looks like, but is that, have staff discussed that at all? Like, I just don't know what you do, like, normally, I would think that someone kind of would be like the deputy or the bureau or something in staff in that absence, but I, I don't know, like, who, who do you go to without having a boss? Like, that's where I'm just kind of confused.
I agree.
We determined that on the seventh, but there's a gap there, so.
Well, Trustee Zizaro, from a legal standpoint, you can have the gap if you feel you can survive for those, for that period of time, but it, it's totally up to the board whether you want to appoint somebody in the, in the interim and for that gap while you're having these discussions. But there's nothing from a legal perspective that says you have to, you have to have an interim person or manager in place.
I, I, and while we legally do not have to have somebody, I think it's important that if there's like an issue between two staff members, that there's a main person that they can go to, or, you know, just that, that one person to bounce things off of without having to go to the HR department, you know? I just think it's important that there's, there's one person, you know?
Well, we're missing leadership is what it is.
A leader, yeah.
We're missing leadership, so.
You need a point person.
Yeah, right. I think so.
Well, I guess my other concern was, and you need to discuss that today, is we're planning to have a meeting on the seventh, but who is that lucky layer putting together the agenda? And if I get.
That's our town clerk, our town clerk gets to do that. It's, it's his job.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, there won't be anything major to come between now and January 7th.
I think that you would want, if, if an accident or something with one of our employees, you know, who would we report to? I would think that would be HR, but other than that, I think as department heads, we're all fine for a few days.
Okay. Well, that, that's kind of what we were looking for, but.
That's exactly what I was looking to hear.
Yeah.
See what you need, how that we can support you.
I don't want to speak for everybody, for me and my department, unless there was an accident to happen, then I'd report that to somebody, which most likely is going to be HR.
Yep.
Which i- if there is an accident, and perhaps HR, right through to the attorney, so that's great.
Yeah.
Great, great thinking, and I think that, that'll work.
Okay, so you'll be the communicator point person should there be something that comes up that's related to staff specific? If it's.
For the record, it looks like Trustee Katsos is looking at our HR, or Ms. Kim?
Yes, I am looking at Ms. Kim. In regards to affirming what you just said, Attorney Goldman, affirming and what Mark had to say also, not projects or anything like that, just staff.
That leadership stays with the leaders of those departments.
Yep.
It's just personnel, that sort of thing.
Are you okay with that? Yes, okay. You look like a deer in the headlights right now.
Well, I mean, the reality of it is, that's, that's also her, her job too, so.
Yeah. Barring no curveballs, I think we'll be fine until the seventh.
And I think that since Dustin is doing the, puts together the packet, if he can like direct on, like who's going to talk, like if we have somebody that's coming in to talk about something on that day, like we've had presenters that he can let us know who those presenters are and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Because I didn't know who Dan was.
Yeah, if I could just add.
Till he introduced himself. Who the heck is Dan?
Try not to delay anything or add time to this evening. Just so you know, though, in that interim period, my contract, I'm only doing planning and land use development, so from December 27th until your meeting occurs, there's going to be no building permit review that typically happens, or building permit submittals that will be accepted, just so you know. It's not within purview of my job right now.
Great.
It's monitored by Nicole, actually, that in her last days of the 31st, so I just want to make that very clear for you all and members of the audience and the public to know, there will be no review of building permit submittals.
Do we need to post that somewhere or make that known if someone thinks they're doing something?
Well.
Hundred percent. You won't be doing that. So, building permits won't just stop. There's a different process. The only thing is you're not using a consultant to do building permit reviews. So there's a scope of work that's going to go in with our building official, our building inspector for plan reviews. Once those are established, building permits can still be issued. Are they going to be issued as timely as they were prior? Probably not.
Right.
But it, it does, it's not a be all end all.
Okay.
So there's processes in place for all this stuff. You know, a lot of the grant funding, the C dot stuff, all that, I'm already copied on all that, so all that's coming through me. Once we get an interim manager in place, we can handle that stuff over and get some of that.
Right.
Some of that going, so I mean, don't panic. It's a couple weeks, we're good. We've been running the place for a while.
Yeah.
Keep going, you know.
Be all right.
Good.
Anyway, just so you're aware.
Yeah.
But yeah, Nicole will no longer be handling any of the building permits. That process is going to get reviewed and restructured once the 31st.
And there was mentioned earlier about second in-person interviews for the community development person. Since, since it's in-person and that sort of thing, I would really recommend that we find or maybe invite somebody from Cortez that does it, or somebody, not Cortez, Ignacio, or somebody from Durango that does that as a spilling for a second opinion of in-person.
So you're talking about a community development director from Durango being a part of that interview process?
Correct.
Okay, got it, all right.
I think, I really think we should reach out to them because they're going to know that position better than most.
I, I met with Marie today. I'm going to attend that meeting.
Okay, so you'll be there for that.
I've been in this business for.
I just wanted somebody who does it to be in the interview and have, have a say for that, so that's perfect. Awesome, thank you.
And I also appreciate you, Dan, informing us that you, that's no longer going to be a part of your contract, so I appreciate knowing that.
It's just not.
It's not.
It's not no longer.
Yes.
We'd have to communicate with you all.
Got it.
If that was something you wanted to discuss with us, with our firm at least.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
See, it's all that kind of information that we don't have that is really beneficial, so.
All right, you don't have anything more?
Yep.
Do you have anything more on that?
I'm, I was just going to ask, does the board have any other questions, concerns?
I have one more. Marie, didn't you say that you put the, was it, was it the interim job, like on Indeed, and you've got it out there in different areas? Is that true? I remember you saying something.
Well, that was last time.
Okay.
Yeah, so this time, I'm redoing it over.
I don't know if I'm going to use Indeed.
Yeah.
But I have already posted it on CML, Government Jobs, and I think Colorado City County Managers' Association.
Yeah.
So, and I sent it out to a few people to post on their stuff, so in process, I'll keep posting, but we're going to have the deadline January 3rd, see what we get, go from there. If we need to open it back up, I'll open it back up.
Okay, great.
Sounds like a good landing.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Okay.
So along the lines of the discussion of where we're at here with the interim, does the staff have questions of us at this point?
I don't really.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out there, I'm just.
Save up those questions for the 7th.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I know. I know, I just thought I'd check in at this point.
Do you think that the people that were suggested in there should know about it ahead of time, that their names were put up as a suggestion?
I think they know who they are.
Not, do they all know who they are and you've already talked to them? Okay. We weren't given that information. We weren't even given who gave it to us or who recommended it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yep. I know nothing.
And, and just, you know, I mean, all the snow equipment's on, operating, we're in a really good spot. So I mean, for a few weeks over the holidays, I don't anticipate anything major coming up. A lot of the activity's going to slow down by next week. You've got Christmas coming up, the New Year's holiday, and then you've really got just a few more days before that next meeting when we'll have that conversation with the board, so I, everything, everything's going to go swimmingly.
We'll hold you to that.
He'll be okay, he'll be okay.
I was knocking on wood when you weren't looking.
Says the man who wears matching Christmas sweaters.
That was so cute.
Moving on.
Yes.
Board of Trustees reports and upcoming dates of interest. Town offices are closed December 24th and 5th, half day on the 31st and January 1st. Trustee reports, I don't have anything at this point in time.
Did you want us to go over our board reports?
Yeah, I was going to go down the line. Trustee Nyberg.
Southwest TPR was last week, but I was unable to attend because they changed the time to nine instead of one, so I got Katie's emails and updates.
Are you going to be there by the, is there one by the 10th or at the 10th or something?
Um, no, but I can email that, once I get that addendum signed.
Okay.
We can mail that in and get her, email it in and have it so they have it.
Yeah, we, they need to make, we need to make sure that they know that the east side intersection is our high priority.
Versus the, yeah.
Yeah, so whatever, whatever email or whatever you need to do to get that out.
All right.
Um, who's next? Trustee Katsos?
Ah.
Oh, I guess I should have went to the board. Trustee Zizaro, you have any reports?
I do. Sorry, you guys have to stop referring, listening to my voice. I last week attended the Bayfield Chamber of Commerce meeting, that we talked about the utility auto pay with the tracking providers, since that could impact businesses too. So they did share out the information that we have been sharing out through the express application, and then I shared, they provided a holiday for their membership drive, they provided a holiday, good grief, they provided a flyer for their membership drive and holiday party, and I was wondering if there was any way we could promote that in the county newsletter? If there's not room, then I understand. The chamber's been doing a lot of the last, of what we're doing with parties. They're looking for a physical mailing address, I think it's for their liability insurance, so they need a physical mailing address, that's P O box, and so I'm not sure if, if they would be able to use the town's address for that, but I know they're looking for follow-up promotion, if that's an option. They mentioned that someone from the Wells Group approached them to do a ribbon cutting for Pine River Commons, and they were thinking that that might be something that would be more of a home fund or a town versus the chamber, doing a ribbon cutting or, or some sort of promotional, I'm not sure what goes around, which I asked this earlier, but I was thinking about chamber stuff when Red Lake was talking about home funds here, but um, let's see, I also talked, they were going to look into joining the Economic Development Alliance, since the chamber, I believe they were a member, but Ashley, the representative of the town, called the chamber when she was ten, they said that they not willing to take on attending what we have with the town, we don't afford, but I think there might be some little room in us talking about sharing information during those, I don't remember if I was there or if we're being supposed to, but I haven't, I haven't talked about so much, because if, if, I don't know if she's also working on, but that, they got me quite meeting proud, I think it's really good that he's got connection with the chamber and other businesses, so I'll continue to attend those meetings, but Katie, if they're still on, who do I talk to? How would we determine if they could use the town hall as a mailing address? Or who, how do I continue that conversation?
Well, you know, I, I think that that actually came, we were.
Well, you know, I, I think that that actually came from the work and we're all nervous about exactly what that is. You know, having in the business background, you know, what, what does that mean? So you, now you're talking about insurance, that's another, that's my liability. So I think that, I think it depends on a clear understanding of what that means.
Okay. Okay, I'll get, I'll get clarification. Thank you. Um, I don't have any reports on, actually, Katie, I think you, for my liaising with the fire department, she kind of let me know that you sent some over information that you had asked for. Was the expectation for Upper Fine to take on the East Intersection Grant, or you were just providing him with the information he needed?
That's, that's what he wanted. He wanted something that shows that documentation of that 1.57 million dollars, which is also has the Towns match on there. It seems like that's what he was wanting for his grant, kind of, you know, more of a safety portion of it. So as far as I know, that's what he was asking for. He was asking for money that would be in the checking account, but we only get reimbursed, we don't get it ahead of time, so.
Okay, so the, the intent was not for Upper Fine to now take this on. It was just, we were providing them with the information they requested.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I will make sure that I'm achieving those stuff. End of my reports.
I attended the park presentation on Thursday. It was exceptional. I'm, I'm really impressed with the group and what they've accomplished thus far. And then I have a Region Nine meeting in January, January 10th, so I'll be attending that.
I attended the Regional Housing Alliance meeting last week and we went over kind of the issues that Pagosa Springs is having with Prop 123 and meeting those area median income for affordable housing in their area because the house prices and the AMI don't meet. And so they are putting together a bill to present those issues that they're having to kind of help them either raise the AMI limits in our, in our areas. So I thought that was very interesting. They're still, they're almost at the tail end of producing a housing needs assessment for La Plata County, which I think once they provide it, we should probably take a look at it and go over it. And then we hired a director, Eva Hansen, you might recognize that, that name. She's very experienced in affordable housing arena, so she's a great choice for that. And that's pretty much it on that. I did, you know, Sarah Tober is, is part of those meetings, so I did reach out to Sarah to get a little more idea on what the requirements were for the Economic Development Alliance and being part of the board. I can attend the, the board portion of it. I just can't attend those early morning meetings to do that. So there's, there's really only the early morning meeting once a month and then a board meeting once a month. And I could do the board meeting once a month, but I can't do the other one.
When is the other one?
It, I think it's a, is it a Tuesday morning, Katie? When, when, when are the Economic Development Alliance morning meetings?
On Tuesdays, aren't they?
They're Tuesdays, but is it once a, second Tuesday?
Yeah, it's like the second Tuesday. I, you know, I think that I could do some of those, you know, I don't know about.
It's a once a month, second Tuesday in the, in the morning.
Yeah. And if I can't, then I'll reach out to another board member and see if they can do it for me.
That's a great idea.
So, yeah, yeah, I can do that.
It's just one I really don't want us to let go of. It's, it, you know.
I, I maybe I'll be fill in on those Tuesday morning, as long as it's not every week and.
No, it's a once a month thing, so.
So I, I could fill in on that.
Okay. Perfect. So I think we have it covered and we'll, we'll be able to.
Someone lets me know what's going on there.
Figure that out. Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to Sarah and kind of give her an idea and I'll see, see the both of you on it.
Okay. Is that allowed?
That's three of us.
If we're trying to communicate.
If I'm trying to communicate, is that allowed?
As long as you're not communicating all at once.
Okay, yeah. Don't hit reply all.
Yeah, do not do that.
Okay.
Trustee McLaren?
Well, I sent out, or Katie forwarded for me some information for the Good Food Collective down in Durango and some work that they are doing in supporting our overall food system for La Plata, well, for the whole Four Corners area. And they've, they do a lot of work more down in Durango, though we have done some work up here in Bayfield with finding out what farmers, while we were working specifically on what restaurants and food service organizations need to be successful and to support, to be self-sufficient and, you know, productive in this area and supporting our population. They're working on a very long-range plan. They've got a three-year, a seven-year, and a 20-year plan. They're trying to develop ways of bringing people in together and finding the resources that they need. And I want to continue to work on that and represent Bayfield. I did do, I have not been real involved with them super lately, but before we worked with them, they did a survey of all these different restaurants to find out what kind of things they needed. Did they need training? Did they need interpretation? Did they need, well, they all need money. But, you know, things like that. And so we did, we were, I worked with Vista with them and we were able to get 25%, was it? Yeah, 25% of those surveys came from Bayfield in this area. And that's only because the girl and I came out and interviewed everybody, but so that was putting our input in because our needs are different than Durango. So I'd really want to continue to work on them. I think it's going to be beneficial for the town of Bayfield as well as just the whole community. And it's sort of my area of expertise. I think I can help with that.
I was just going to say, that's a great fit for you.
Yeah, it's a good fit for me.
Sure.
Next up is the executive session for a conference with the town attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24 dash 6 dash 402, 4B concerning and surrounding general legal issues raised in CRS 31 dash 4 dash 307, removal of officers, causes notice, and related case law under CRS 24 dash 6 dash 402, 4B. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. The presiding officer will be Mayor Ah. Town Board trustee Nyberg, trustee Zizaro, trustee Katzos, trustee Moreland, trustee McLaren, town attorney.
Goldman.
Goldman. I'm like, that's not your name. And that's it, right?
Uh, is trustee, will we, will trustee Zizaro be able to participate if everybody else removes themselves from Zoom?
I believe so.
Is she there?
Yeah. I think we can call.
Recorded to the cloud, so.
Can we just call her?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think calling her would be a safer, is that okay, trustee Zizaro?
Okay.
Okay. Wait, 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 wait. Okay, I made a motion. I.
Second.
There's more here. I've been waiting.
Second that motion.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro. Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes.
Okay. I got to run to the restroom, too.
Hey, Katie, thank you so much for attending.